So I wanted to make a mural of a joyful bike ride. And that's what it is. It's a blissful joyride. This is part of our Super Bloom. And this is actually this street on Honeycutt, which was just like a month ago was all blown up with these yellow trees and the green pieces out there. So it's just one of my favorites because it reminds me of the amount of fun times we had together going bike riding every night.
And this piece directly represents you and your family life and your family together. Describe that for us.
Absolutely. Like, we, we love going on bike rides and going around the neighborhood. We love going and getting picnics. Pick up Chipotle and then we'll just, you know, find a spot under a tree and just hang out. And that's, it's one of those things where she'll want to do it every night and she gets to talk about the rest of the end of her day and open up. And it's just a really fun event for us to do. And I think as I've been doing this piece and bike riders have come by, it's been fun to see families together see this and feel like they're being captured from Maricopa.
What does it mean to you to have this gorgeous public artwork up in your city?
Just the world. I'm so excited. I'm excited to have seen the nine other pieces that are going to be out there, just to see what everybody has and everybody's unique, like fingerprint and art and seeing how, what they're going to come up with. I'm just excited to see more of this throughout the city because I think it just really brings out the community to life.
It does. Thank you so much for being a part of our public art initiative here in the city of Maricopa. Thank you so much for gifting our community with your talents. It's beautiful and something that people can really enjoy and last a really long time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Welcome back to the program where the questions are answers and the answers don't stop. It's Maricopa's favorite game show, Permit or Not. I'm your host, Luis Vila, and I'd like to remind our viewers today that if you have any questions regarding any of the categories today, please leave them in the comments below. Now let's take a look at the board. The categories today are: City Services, Do I Need a Permit for That?, What's Being Developed?, City Events?, Library?, and Road. Bob, why don't you leave things off for us?
Thank you, Luis. I'll take a Do I Need a Permit for That? for 200.
I would like to pour a slab of concrete in my backyard. Do I need a permit for that?
What is no?
That is correct. Slabs or pavers in your backyard are up to the owner's discretion. However, any work being done in the front yard, you'll need to contact your HOA.
I'll take permits for 600.
My pool needs to be drained. Do I need a permit for that?
Yes. I mean, what is yes? What is no?
That is correct. Pro tip: If you're looking to drain the water in your pool, you'll find two black water conduits in the front of your home. One of them leads directly to sewage. Plug it in and you're ready to begin draining. However, you'll need to contact Global Water first as the pool water needs to be of a specific pH level before you can begin the draining. So that's all the time we have for today. Be sure to tune in next time to Permit or Not? And until then, feel free to visit www.mericopa-az.gov for all of your questions regarding city events, permits, and more. Or leave us a comment below and we'll be sure to get back to you.
This is awesome to see the representation and to see how many people come out. It's all the different colors that are represented here in Maricopa. It's really neat.
Yeah, we're excited to try the food options and to see the performances.
Copa Cultural Event has been great so far. A lot of great food trucks here, a lot of things to do for the kids, and a lot of really interesting vendors. We love this city. We love living here and we moved here from East Mesa and it's been an awesome decision.
Once again tonight, a crowded house. I love that. Love when the people come to speak and listen and hear and learn. It's really fantastic. So I called to meeting, to order this meeting tonight, the regular city council meeting, July 16th, 2024. And I'd like to invite up Pastor Rusty Acres. And he's from Community of Hope Church. And he will give our invocation and after that we'll have the pledge of allegiance given to us by Councilmember Marsh. Please rise if you're able.
Will you pray with me? Father God, we're just so grateful that we live in a country that we have freedom. And God, we just pray for the men and women who stand on the wall for that freedom tonight, Father. We pray for the families of those men and women as well, God. We pray for the women and men who have given their lives for that freedom. God, as we enter into this season, this political season, God, above all, I want to pray for one word. Can we pray for unity? We thank you. We thank you for the forgiveness and the grace we have, God. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please turn in the pledge. Let me introduce this flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Pastor Rusty Acres and Councilmember Marsh. And that'll take us to roll call, Vanessa.
Councilmember Gettle?
Present.
Councilmember Nor?
Present.
Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Brady? Councilmember Wade?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lierman?
Here.
Madam Mayor Smith?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Vanessa. That takes us to proclamations and acknowledgements, awards, and presentations of which we have none tonight. So we'll go directly to the report from the mayor and council members. Councilmembers, who would like to share their past few weeks with us? Councilmember Marsh?
Yes, I obtained today a copy of the draft plan update for the cities updating the general plan. The general plan is a document that we have to update every 10 years and it's a governing document. It provides context for planning and zoning for city council to make decisions and so forth. This process is going to take several months. It runs through November 2026 and it starts this month. So if you want to get involved in, in the general plan update, I was involved in the last update 10 years ago. It's quite an experience and it changes the course of Maricopa's future. So watch for announcements on opportunities to participate in that. I had a busy month of committee meetings and campaigning. On the 21st of June, the Lunch and Learn at the Senior Center featured Mayor Smith, Mayor Smith giving facts about Maricopa. And she's got a lot of facts. On the 27th, I attended a Board of Adjustment meeting in Florence. We had five cases. On the 29th of June, Supervisor Kevin Kavanaugh, Chairman Robert Miguel, and I gave a state of the county presentation, Town Hall at Copper Sky, and that was fun. On the 4th of July, the city staff put on an excellent Independence Day celebration. It was outstanding. They changed the map of the event and it really came off well. On the 8th of July, Penel Partnership Water Resources Committee met and I learned that water resources are Penel Partnership's number one priority. On the 11th, In Maricopa hosted a council candidates debate, but it wasn't really a debate because Eric, Amber, and I are basically all on the same page. We do look at issues from different perspectives, but we understand each other and respect each other. Then there was the mayoral debate and that was another story. On the 15th, the Senior Advisory Committee met and it was a 21-minute meeting. Seniors are quick and efficient. On the 19th, this Friday, the Lunch and Learn features Ben Bitter, City Manager. The door prizes are three $50 gift cards. So seniors, I invite you to come to the Senior Center at 11 on Friday, have lunch from Sprouts for $5, and learn what's happening in Maricopa from the city manager. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Marsh. Would anyone else like to share? All right. Councilmember Nor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight and to remind everyone that school is about to start again. And there are a lot of local businesses that are participating in a school supply drive along with Maricopa Pantry. And so those bins are located at several businesses across the city and you can find that on Facebook on the Maricopa Pantry's page. I know Honeycutt's participating and there's, there's like 15 businesses. The Chamber of Commerce has a bin as well. The hospital has one. And so if you'd like to contribute school supplies to those in need, that, please feel free. And I was also at the 4th of July, Great American Fourth that the city put on and it was a fabulous event as Councilman Marsh indicated. It was great to see so many people from the city out there celebrating our independence together. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes? Okay. Vice Mayor Lierman?
Also with the schools starting, just remember that please be careful driving around walkways and new drivers will be out and about, so just be patient with each other. Traffic trends will change with school starting, so plan accordingly. And Mayor, I just wanted to share, I don't know how much our community is aware, but the national political tone has unfortunately trickled down to the local level. It saddens my already bereaved heart that Maricopa Police Department has had to investigate two threats towards city council members on July 8th and July 11th, right before the assassination attempt on President Trump on July 13th. I am going to request of our community members that we all consider the impact of our behavior on those around us. I would like to share some of the remarks from Melania Trump and encourage each of us to reflect on how we can contribute to the health of our city, county, state, and country. to the health of our city, county, state, and country. It saddens me to think that any council member or any city staff has to worry about their safety of themselves or their beloved family members. Some are numb to loss and its realities, and to some of us, loss feels a breath away and are deeply aware of the gravity of threats and comments being made. And so Melania wrote a beautiful letter, and I just want to read a part of it. "Our courage and common sense must ascend and bring us back together as one. Let us not forget that differing opinions, policy, and political games are inferior to love. Political concepts are simple when compared to us human beings. We are all humans, and fundamentally, instinctively, we want to help one another. Politics are only one vehicle that can uplift our communities. Love, compassion, kindness, and empathy are necessities. Let us remember that when the time comes to look beyond the left and the right, beyond the red and the blue, we all come from families with passion to fight for a better life together while we are here in this earthly realm. Ascend above the hate, the vitriol, the simple ideas that ignite violence. We all want a world where respect is paramount, family is first, and love transcends. We must insist that respect falls the cornerstone of our relationships again. Thank you for remembering that every single politician is a man or a woman with a loving family." So I just want to share that it saddens me and it shocks me that here in the city of Maricopa, that we would be getting threats from community members. So if we could all make an impact on the people around us, I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lierman. All right, last chance. Okay, so just a couple of things that I think are interesting or neat in terms of our American Legion. Several of us were invited to go to a new installation of officers, of which Joe Nell Sullivan was installed as the American Legion commander, as well as nine other veterans to new officer positions. I mentioned last time at city council that we were invited, Vice Mayor Lierman and I, to a Women's Veterans Event. And every time I go to an event over at our Veterans Center, I'm amazed and impressed by the veterans that we have, so I definitely appreciate them. As Councilmember Marsh indicated, I spoke at the Senior Lunch and Learn, and I loved every minute of it. I was told that I'd be bombarded with a ton of questions, but after I gave my presentations, the seniors came up to me and said, "I don't have anything to ask you." So I guess I was pretty thorough. It was a lot of fun. I also attended the Juneteenth at CAC, which was extremely fun. There was great music there, loved the entertainment, and lots of our community vendors were there as well to celebrate Juneteenth. So that was a fun event. We also had the opportunity to attend a Veterans Town Hall. And so that was really unique. I think, I believe it was maybe the first one in all of our existence as a city. I'm not exactly 100%. Yep, I think I'm getting a yes. So it was really, really quite interesting. They had a ton of questions in terms of, "How does the city help here? How does the city help there?" And then what I even loved more is that when we would respond to a question in reference to, "How can we help?", we're like, "How can we help you do these things?" Because they really are the ones who have the connections and have the ability to make things happen. And if any one of us can go and attend a meeting to make a service come to the city of Maricopa, we definitely want to make sure we do that. So it was really a nice opportunity to talk with veterans. And then lastly, I want to remind you and invite you to our Police Dispatch grand opening and tours. If you want to see a tour, you might get a one-time chance of seeing the operations of the Police Department and Dispatch Center on July 27th at 9:00 a.m. So I'd love to see you there and love to have you take a tour and see how fantastic this new building is going to be. That brings us to the end of the report from the mayor and city council. We have the report from city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just one thing to update you all in the public on tonight. We recently installed some special landscaping on Porter Road. On the north side, as you hit Smith-Inkey, this area just north of the fire station was kind of an area that it was cost prohibitive to put some traditional landscaping in. So we looked at some ways to really beautify the area and make it lively. So we were able to contact a company that creates some metal structures that look very realistic in real life and fit in with our desert theme. And so as you go up in the area, please take note of the saguaro's and the agave plants and the barrel cactuses that are there decorating. Those are all metallic and something that we really wanted to test out and see how they stood up under the conditions and see how convenient it was for our teams to install those. And certainly, much, much more cost-effective than the traditional route of going with landscaping. And obviously, the side benefit of saving water for other necessities. And so something we'll look at doing again in the future in other areas and throughout the community where appropriate. But something new for us and exciting that is something worthwhile of taking note. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know I was out of town and came into town and went by that area, and my husband goes, "They put up some new cactus." And then we had to swirl back by, and we're like, "Wait a minute. Those are metal. They're so beautiful." And so I texted him and said, "Great job. See, take a look at it. It's really quite beautiful." All right, that'll take us to the call to the public. I do have five speaker cards this evening. Let me read to you how the call to the public works. The procedures to follow if you address the council are council requests that you express your ideas in three minutes or less and refrain from any personal attacks or derogatory statements about any city employee, a fellow citizen, and anyone else, whether in the audience or not. The mayor will limit discussion whenever they deem such an action appropriate to the proper conduct of the meeting. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council or may ask staff to review a matter or may ask that a matter be put on future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss and take legal action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. And then finally, a word of decorum at our medians. Periodically, we may want to applaud a success or show our approval of a comment, or occasionally, we may personally disagree with something that is said. However, when we're hearing input from our city council and our residents, whether we support their comments or disagree with their comments, please do not applaud or negatively respond to a speaker unless invited to do so by the presiding authority. It's important, very important, that every person who addresses city council has a right to speak and not be intimidated. So we'll start off with our speaker cards. Our first one is Barry McCain.
Good evening, Mayor Smith, council staff, and friends. My name is Barry McCain. Can you hear me now? Okay. I'm right from here in Maricopa all my life. Also, I'm a writing candidate for Board of Supervisor District One, where I've been there since 2012 to present, at the Capitol since 2005 to present. 2018, I was on the House of Representatives on the ballot, and I'm Freedom Writer in 2020. I think a lot of people don't know how to have a spirited discourse. But let me just say, you've heard me talk about how bad favoritism, cronyism, and nepotism are for democracy, showing any one of these three is a practice of offering a position to an unqualified individual or individuals based on blind loyalty. This treatment causes stress on both sides in negotiations until stress becomes so great that it becomes inability to work together. Again, these three showing partiality to family, friends, associates, while lacking ethics and undermines the common good or fairness while giving undue advantage to someone who doesn't merit this treatment. The most critical issue is a lack of competency, accountability, which weakens the morale and integrity, not to mention the faith and integrity of the government. Most important, public officials must be held accountable because they receive public money. Now, I have candidates behind me that they've been fair. They work very hard to be fair. And yet, Mayor, you have a right to your opinion, but not to dictate. And I've heard it over and over again, watching how you don't want people to have a debate. Well, how are we going to work together and find a commonality without a debate? And you keep talking about it, but I don't think... I personally, just like Mike Tyson said, not personal, but I personally believe that you have not been fair with my candidates, and I think that you should say I apologize to them for not being fair. Of course, that's what this cabal is about. So you have three votes instead of one. And you can't stand there and say, "Well, it didn't happen." That's not a good enough excuse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Was that directed at me?
Not personally. Your action.
My action. So let's talk later, because I have absolutely no idea what you're referring to. I really appreciate all of the candidates. And so I've been to three debates and willing to debate every single time. So yeah, let's talk later. I have absolutely no idea. Thank you very much. So we'll take the next caller to the public, Kelly Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council and staff. Councilwoman Nor, thank you so much for mentioning the school supplies drive. I just wanted to advise you all that In Maricopa posted an article not long ago where they listed all of the locations for this year's school supply drive. They include Ace Hardware, Adobe Blinds &amp; More, Mandy's Wine Bar, Big O Tires, the In Maricopa Office, Maricopa Chamber of Commerce, Title Services of the Valley, Nando's Mexican Cafe, Native Grill &amp; Wings, Province Community, Raceway Bar &amp; Grill, Roots Eatery, Tractor Supply, Tight Chili to Go, VFW Post 12043, Water &amp; Ice, and Cold Beer &amp; Cheeseburgers. That full list, again, can be found on InMaricopa.com. Also, you may or may not know, our friends at the Maricopa Monitor annually do a survey of residents called the Creme de la Copa. It's our opportunity as citizens to vote for the best of the best and our favorite businesses here in the community. And this year, the Chamber of Commerce is proud to note that 55 of our member businesses all made the list of everybody's best or favorite. So we ask that each of you tell all of your friends and all of their friends to visit CremeDeLaCopa.com starting this Friday and vote for your favorites. Also, I believe each of you have already been invited, but we invite you again to join us tomorrow evening. It is Wednesday, right? Tomorrow evening at Adobe Blinds &amp; More for a ribbon-cutting ceremony for majestic moments, events, and soirees. It begins at 5:00, and it is Nacho Average Fiesta. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next...
Today's Tuesday, so Thursday, not tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Been a busy week.
Okay, no problem. Our next speaker is Judith Seymont.
Am I on?
Yes.
Yes. The world of the arts is my world, and we all know that the arts are central to human experience. They reflect the core of our humanity. They exalt our spirit. They surprise us. Sometimes they mystify us, and often they prompt us to think things we hadn't thought before. They also serve as points of luster and distinction for their home city, the place where they are imagined and made real. And the arts have done that for Maricopa. And I stand here today to thank the city of Maricopa for supporting its arts in several ways. First, we have something that started brewing more than 11 years ago in a proclamation from Mayor Christian Price that invited support and honor for the arts and humanities in the city of Maricopa. This was added to mightily by a proclamation from Mayor Nancy Smith in November of 2022, strongly supporting the arts and humanities in our city. These proclamations have been heard now in real ways. Not only is our city graced by the many colored horses that dot our landscape and the colored electrical boxes that serve at intersections, but also now we have grants to the organizations in the performing arts. And I want to specify the organizational grant to Maricopa Community Theater for its production of Chicago, and the joint grant, the Vibrant City Arts Grant, to Maricopa Music Circle Chamber Orchestra and Maricopa Arts Council, so that we will have a grand winter holiday concert, and we will have a terrific upcoming studio crawl and the second abstract art gallery. This city is really on the map in terms of its arts. I salute you on behalf of all of my colleagues in the arts and say thank you, and invite everybody in this room on August 22nd to the Artist Town Hall, which is an annual event put forward by Maricopa Arts Council and will be held at the library at 5:30 to 6:30. Our topic for this year is "Increased Communication for the Excellence of Maricopa's Arts." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judith. The next speaker we have is Tara Gallagher.
I'm with Phil Division Academy, a micro school here in Maricopa. When I think of people I most admire throughout history, they all have one attribute in common. They are doers. Our founding fathers did something when debating and committees weren't getting the results needed. Nicholas Winton did save 669 children just before World War II using minimal resources after President Roosevelt failed to assist him. Rosa Parks and Martin Luther King Jr. couldn't change the laws, but they did what they could to stand up for what was right, and ultimately, their actions led to change. I've often wondered what I would do if I lived during those times. I hoped that I would be like them. Now, I feel I know the answer to this question. After being let down by my local school district because they failed to provide safe working and learning conditions, I did speak up at the school board meetings. With the support of my husband, I did start a micro school to help those students most at risk in our community who were failed by the traditional system. I did stay strong after getting the hate note left on my door saying, "Rip my school down brick by brick." I did find an alternative to continue serving them when my local government failed to create a mayoral task force to start finding a solution. I do continue to advocate for other micro schools operating from home. Micro schooling is not going away. ESA students have more than doubled since I opened my doors in July of last year. And now ESA serves 100,000 students. I attended a micro school conference in DC in June, and there were 45 states and two countries represented. Why is this format for education growing so rapidly? Because the doers are tired of waiting for the bureaucratic parties to make decisions. Our children and our future are too important to be left entirely to the mercy of school boards, city councils, state, and federal governments, timelines, and procedures. Sometimes the risks are just too high. However, you seven, hold the power to do something, to create a city ordinance to support micro schooling. You alone. No need to consult the reservation, state, or federal governments. You can do something. What have you done since this was brought to your attention in June? Action is how you prove passion to your community. It costs nothing but time to create a task force, and it makes us feel heard as your constituents. You think that we're the only micro school with 30 students or more? Think again. There are at least two others. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Change does not roll in on the wheels of inevitability, but it comes through the continuous struggle. We must use time creatively and knowledge that the time is always ripe to do right." What will you do for micro schools?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Horst. Our next speaker is Rick Horst.
Mayor Smith, members of the council, it's been over forty years since I've had the opportunity to speak in a call to the public forum. To be clear, I'm no longer a member of the senior leadership team of this city and stand before you simply as a citizen. And I just have to say this for fun, you work for me now. In a democracy, controversy is healthy. The public interest is well-served by robust public debate. Debate, however, degenerates, blocking constructive compromises when individuals elect to attack the person rather than the policy or the trajectory of the city. There are those within our community, and they know who they are, and I know who they are, and I suspect most in this room know who they are, that seemingly delight in direct attacks against people rather than concepts and institutions. They seek to demean, harass, discredit. They attack a person's faith, their character, and most alarmingly of all, they now seek to harass family members, including children. And for what purpose? If their goal is just to be mean, well, then they're succeeding. If they are simply ignorant, they have proven themselves so. But if they truly believe that the policy and, and the city trajectory needs to change, then I challenge them to stand before this body, to engage in public discourse, to make their case, to point and counterpoint. Just show up. As I stated, I know who these individuals are. Most never attend council meetings, and those that do choose not to speak. They would rather skip the opportunity to engage in the conversation prior to council action and wait until far after the action to attack the results. Both elected and appointed officials have offered opportunity to meet over and over again. Such meetings would allow them to garner facts and gain a better understanding of the issues. Though only a few, they seek to make a loud noise. We need to reduce the noise and vitriol and elevate the notion that there will be differences and division on issues. To those few, I say, bring your voice here. Make your case, but stop the vitriol. Mayor, council, staff, I applaud you for always taking the high road for your dedication and for your steadfastness.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the end of the speaker cards. We, are there any other audience members that would like to approach the podium during this call to the public? Yes, please come forward. State your name.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenneth Golacki. The, I'm sorry, the, the last two moved me. I guess I wanna just speak about the things that's been going on, but highly first, I just wanted to just say that I don't think y'all know that I am a three forty-seven survivor. In two thousand and sixteen, October seventh, I was hit and had a, and had, on, I'm sorry, two-car collision. And so then, in two thousand and twenty-one, I hit and hurt the horses. And so I'm not asking for anything. I'm not trying to be a part of anything. I just want change, just like the young lady said. And so just thinking about what have we been talking about, the youth, you know? And so everything's coming up. And so what are y'all really gonna do? You know? I know some people have organizations, and so what I'm asking for is, there's another organization doing school drives, so what schools are y'all gonna plan on helping out with? You know, the, the, I, I took the drive like you did, Ms. Nancy, and seeing, I went to California and seeing the new landscape and seeing the new apartments and seeing how the city is just growing, but really, what are we doing for the youth? You know, we just got a new police department, but what development is for the youth? I looked into the Maricopa CAC campus. There's only four certificates here. Three of them is for culinary. One of them is for philo- philo- philombray, can't pronounce it. But what are there, what are there more opportunities for police, other, other certificates? I just want us to really invest into our people, our young people. How many more people are gonna come up here? How many of your grandchildren, children have came and sit in and said, hey, what changed? And so I'm really asking you, what are you gonna do this year? Election is coming up, preliminary is coming up. So I'm just asking you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and approach the podium? Yes, right in the front row. Give us your name.
Uh, my name is Christine Ballinger. Is this on? That's good. Recently, I saw a drone view of all of Maricopa. Beautiful. You have to, you have to see one of those. And I wanna thank you for all that you've done for our city. It looks beautiful. It's busy. We need other things, and I know that you have proposals in. Recently, I read an article in the In Maricopa about our Copper Sky Gym and stating what is going on there, the misconduct that's going on. And I noticed also in this article that the city officials launched an investigation into these assaults. So I wanna say thank you for that, to our police force, our investigators for doing that. I commend them for that. Also, I noticed in here there's a code of conduct, excuse me, there's a code of conduct, a list of things, of behaviors that have to be, you know, employed there at the gym. I'm grateful for that. So I come to you today, as I have in the past, to ask you if you could develop a code of conduct in our library for our library books. I wanna show you a book that highlights a grandfather. Some of you in the audience are grandfathers, some on the council are grandparents. This one highlights a grandfather, a homosexual grandfather, but he sends those leather shorts, straps, and all, it's just really obscene. It doesn't adhere to the code of conduct. Now, at the gym, it's verbal mainly, and gesture and physical, but in our library, it's in word and in pictures and art. And as the previous speaker said, in art, it speaks volumes. And to our innocent children, I work for the school district. Were I to give this book to one of the children, they would trust me. They would think that I'm giving them something safe and good. They wouldn't even consider it. They would just take it and try to enjoy it, but I don't wanna be responsible for damaging their conscience, their hearts. I care about Maricopans. I care about all of you, and I always hope for the best for all of you. And here's another book that I've brought in the past, The Gay B.C.s. You know, it's a distraction from our children's education. So I just encourage you that maybe you can get together and develop a code of conduct for the books that we receive in our library. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
I made that short, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to approach the podium? Yes, ma'am. Oh, come, come forward, sir. Then we have you. Okay.
Onto the city council. Thank you. I wanna just give a, um, I'm so excited that Vice Mayor Amber came to our church. My bishop is Deion Hill from Blaze Ministries, and the people galvanized around her because they didn't see her up front, but they saw her as a person. And so we have about seven thousand African Americans in Maricopa. So I'm asking the board, we have so many different programs, but have y'all ever considered about sitting down with the pastors and just talking to them about how we can make things better? Have you ever just considered just sitting down with the pastors and leaders and ask them what we can do about the youth? And to Vice Mayor Amber, I wanna say I appreciate you because you saw the love you had, even like our church and a black church, it's a God church. So before every meeting, we stand up and we pray, and we do the pledge of allegiance. And the people of our church, Blaze Ministry, we really appreciate you. And so I wanna just thank you for everything. And I wanna say this, I'm a resident of Maricopa, and I'm sorry y'all go through the threats and the hate, but I wanna say one thing happened to me. Crystal O'John is running for city council. I had somebody come to my yard and take up her sign and just tear it up. God is not about hate. God is about love. And a lot of times, her signs get tore up. And so I just wanna tell her, Ms. Crystal, you stay strong, because she have a heart for the people. And I wanna say to you, Vice Mayor Amber, I wanna thank you again. And I wanna challenge the council, won't y'all step out and come to churches and let people see you for people? Because y'all are good people. But when she came to our church, it made people look at her different. So I'm asking the council, I challenge you, sit down with the black leaders in Maricopa and see how we can do and make this, this town better for everybody, for all our youth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name's Linda Cummings, and I've been here for about seven years, just about. And Mr. Gettle came to the Q and A the other day, which was really good, really enjoyed that. Thank you. So one of my questions is, me being, starting to pay more attention to the government and such, and I do wanna start here at the grassroots, the budget. Is there a way, without going through, I understand there's a big, huge budget book like this, to understand the budget? Where's our money going, some of that planning? And then the second part is, a lot of seniors, and probably more than just seniors, housing has become very unaffordable. And we kinda talked a little bit about it with Mr. Gettle, that maybe there's some planning going on that needs to go on to get more like condo or smaller housing that would be affordable for people. Not everyone can afford the big houses, nor do they need or want it. So we would really like to find out what the plans are to help increase that availability so people don't have to leave the city. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to come forward and approach the podium?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I just wanted to say thank you for the Fourth of July staff. You guys did a great job. I really do appreciate it. It's always fun to see fireworks. And the other reason why I wanted to stand here today was, I was, we've been working with Jim at the Maricopa Pantry, and last month, we raised thirty-two hundred dollars for a fifty-fifty, and I wanna thank council members who donated and residents. Thank you very much. And we're doing it again for July twenty-fifth. It's twenty dollars a ticket. We gave away, on the fifty-fifty, about sixteen hundred dollars, it was sixteen thirty or something like that. So I am selling tickets. If anybody would like to contact me, four eight oh three five eight eight zero five one, or you can just find my number anywhere you'd like. But again, I'd like to thank everybody who did donate, because again, they are trying to build a two-point-five million dollar facility to take care of the people of Maricopa. Again, this is the Maricopa Pantry I'm talking about. About two years, two and a half years ago, they had a little bit of a fire and burnt down the whole entire place, so they need to build a whole new building with refrigerators and everything. So again, if anybody would care to donate, it's twenty dollars. They are gonna do the drawing down in Raceway on July twenty-fifth, and it's twenty dollars a ticket, and you can contact me if you care to donate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to, yes, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Tina Dugan. As I sit here and listen tonight about everybody talking about getting involved, you don't necessarily have to get involved in person. I got involved many years ago because I was angry because I went to a PRL meeting and someone shook their finger at all the citizens in the audience and told them they should be grateful for what the city gives them, and that's how I ended up where I am today. But it takes a lot to get involved, and I understand that. But I would like to remind everyone that one of the biggest concerns that everybody has is three forty-seven. And our mayor started this little group, and all of you can get involved without ever going anywhere in person. It's called threefoursevenfacts, F-A-C-T-S, dot com. And if you go there, you can find out lots of information, which James Singleton has just given us the information that in the last ten years, there have been thirty-five fatal accidents and forty-three fatalities. It's information like this that helps to make a difference, but you can too. Because if you go to threefoursevenfacts.com slash contact, with just your name and email address, you can send out a hundred emails to state legislators, to the Arizona Department of Transportation, and the Arizona Department of Transportation State Board. They never have to see your face, but you can put down information in there, and with that information, they know the city of Maricopa is watching their actions. And it's because of the mayor in the last two years that a lot of those squeaky wheels are being heard. So if you wanna get involved, you can start without ever getting up and talking, but simply using the keyboard on your computer at threefoursevenfacts.com.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to come forward? Yes, please do.
Hi, my name is Victoria DeFranco, and I wanna talk about the seniors in the city. Since I've been here, the seniors have been at five different facilities, and everywhere we've gone, we've been thrown out of. We started at where Napa was, and when they did the overpass, we had to leave. Then we were sent to Copper Sky, and only one day a week. And then when they had availability to get money, we couldn't go there. Before that, we were at the school. They turned that into the food bank. Then we worked at Copper Sky. And now we're at the Senior Center, which originally it was, the whole thing was supposed to be the Senior Center, now it's a community center. And now we're getting rearranged in there. And I'm wondering, every time I ask you, Mayor, I am told, there's not enough money. We're a new city, and there's not enough money to do anything for the seniors. But when I looked at the budget for last year, Rick Horst, who was the city manager, and his group of people made eight-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars. I mean, to me, that's unreal, that some, one person could make that kind of money, and then I ask you, and there's not enough money. I mean, that's, totally blows my mind. I mean, I'm sorry. Seniors should be treated with so much more respect because we have paid taxes for longer than most anybody else here. For people to come in and that start clearing our stuff out of our room, we are there five days a week, seven hours a day. And for somebody to say, if this is your stuff, take it home, we don't want it here, that's crap. I mean, that's really bad. You know, there's a lot of salary going out for everybody who works for the city. I think it should be distributed much better. And now, from what I saw on the city page, Rick is still working for the city. I don't know what his salary is. But then is Ben Britt, if that's his name, making that kind of salary? And his workers making another eight-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars? I don't know. But if it is, that's shameful. Because, Mayor, you keep saying, it's a new city, we don't have that kind of money. Well, it looks like you do. You're just not distributing it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say, in response to her comment that I said there's not enough money for the Senior Center, what I shared with her is that the seniors, in my opinion, have been very blessed to have a spot for many, 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 many years, where we still have needs for, as was suggested tonight, a teen center. So there are still needs in this new city. And regarding our staff salary comparisons are done, these folks are leaders in our city, and they are paid according to the salary amongst the cities that surround us. So I'll leave it at that. Would anyone else like to approach the podium? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. I don't have any speaker cards for consent agenda. So council members, do you have any questions, concerns, issues on any of the items? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion? So moved by Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Marsh. Any additional comments, questions, concerns? All right. And all approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, say nay. That motion carries. Thank you very much. That'll take us to the regular agenda. And we'll go to item 8 dot 1, which will be led by Derek Shear.
Good evening, Mayor Smith. Councilmember Derek Shear with the Planning Division of the Development Services Department. I'm here to present the next item on the Agenda 8 point 1, which is ordinance ORD 24 dash 09. This is an ordinance for a major planned area development change. This planned area development was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 13th, and was approved unanimously. However, subsequent to that meeting, the applicant met with city staff, city engineers, city attorneys to refine the stipulations of approval, specifically stipulations 3, 4, 11, 12, and elimination of 15, to clarify responsibilities of off-site improvements that the projects may incur, specifically at the intersection of Stonegate Road and Allen Stevens, and traffic calming measures there. Because the changes in the stipulations, this item could not be put on the consent agenda, so it had to go on the regular agenda. I have a presentation for the council, if the council would like to hear it, or if the council were happy with the memo that was presented to them with these stipulation changes, or answer any questions that the council may have.
Council, what is your preference? Any questions, comments? They would like to see the presentation.
Very good, thank you. The Stonegate Planned Area Development Major Amendment was requested PAD 24 dash 05. This is an application by Gammage and Burnham PLC on behalf of Stonegate BFC LLC. You can see on the screen, the site that encompasses the area. It's approximately 28.53 acres. The proposed amendment is due to the change in the PAD where an original spine road that connected Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway to Allen Stevens Parkway is being proposed to be truncated. It will no longer connect all the way through. As this changed the traffic pattern in the area, this, under our ordinance, made this a major amendment that required public hearing and approval by the council instead of administrative action at the staff level. The proposed truncation that you can see here, that is the only thing being proposed in this PAD amendment. There is no change to any densities for residential development, height deviations, architectural changes. It was only this sort of, this change here, which changed the traffic pattern, and by code, elevates it to having to go to a public hearing. Public hearing was heard May 13th by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we're here before the council to seek approval. As we can see here, this was the traffic circulation plan. Allen Stevens on the upper right, Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway on the lower left. That big lot on the bottom right, that is the Home Depot site, that is very quickly being built. It should be open sometime later this year. The other pads at front on Casa Grande Highway, main drive access to all of these pads off of Casa Grande Highway, where you see in green, that's where it truncates, following that line all the way up to Allen Stevens Parkway is where that street would have been under the old PAD. However, now traffic will be rerouted along Allen Stevens to the intersection of Stonegate, eliminating that sort of cut through the commercial and residential private development and private ownership. The change, in lieu of that spine road going through there, the applicant is proposing developing a trail. It's going to be a nice landscape trail, hardscape and softscape paths, that will connect down to Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway and that trail that goes all the way down Casa Grande Highway, past Walmart, to the south. As part of this, with the PAD, the applicant is included for provisions for a build-to-rent multifamily product. There weren't any regulations in the previous PAD for this. It was for just regular multifamily, but now they are specifying this use. It is a multifamily use, but getting more detailed on the type of use. We've seen these type of developments throughout the city on several different projects, some that have been completed, some that are under construction right now. On the 13th of May, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve the rezone request for PAD 24 dash 05. Staff is recommending that the council recommend approval for this, with the conditions of approval in the staff report and as amended by the memo that was presented to the council. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant's consultant team is here as well to answer any questions.
Very good. Council, any questions? Comments? Moved to approve by Councilmember Manfredi, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Wade. Any comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll take us to item 8 dot 2, which is a presentation from Rick Horst on Economic
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Before I start, I would like to introduce the members of the OEO team, Office of Economic Opportunity. We have with us tonight Christian Price, our Chief Economic Development Officer. I'm not sure if any of you know him, but he's here. We also have Dr. Joshua Inkum, our senior project manager here. Next to him is Rachel LaFalle, our senior project manager, and Nicole Odins is here, our administrative assistant. So I will apologize in advance, because this may take more than just two or three minutes, but it's important to tell the whole story, to educate our public on the efforts we're making, to clarify misinformation, and to hopefully stir some real excitement about the opportunities that exist for this city, that will generate new revenues, not only for the city, but for every person living in the city as a benefactor of some of these Okay. So the Maricopa Office of Economic Opportunity works to enhance Maricopa's economy by supporting the creation of higher-wage jobs, promoting direct investment, and increasing prosperity for our citizens. In a grow-or-die world, we have our priorities set straight. In 2003, the city of Maricopa was incorporated with a population of around 4,000 people. No one would have ever wanted to move here if we hadn't started emphasizing what a great place this is to live. You can't keep Maricopa secret and attract people at the same time. A city that is not attracting new residents, creating jobs, and experiencing growing pains is a city with very dim prospects. In Maricopa, in the Wall Street Journal, published in February of 2009, the article read, "Builders Rushed Into This One-Time Agricultural Crossroads During the Housing Boom." They lured people who couldn't afford homes nearby Phoenix or its costly suburbs. And the title of the article, "A Paradise Found and Lost." If we thought we're growing fast now, back then it was 5,000 homes a year. But it busted. And the city really struggled, because the old economy is tied to just housing by itself. And frankly, if it weren't for the leadership of the council at that time, the city may have folded and incorporated. They wouldn't have worked. Well, a decade later, later, the Wall Street Journal put out another article, "A Decade After the Housing Bust, the Exherbs Are Back." So once we were the foreclosure capital of the world, then we were the most resilient comeback city, and they highlighted Maricopa. Now, think about all the cities in all of the nation, and they highlighted us. So a decade ago, the site of new homes under construction in Maricopa was almost unimaginable. Four in five homeowners were underwater, with their outstanding mortgages worth more than their properties. But in 2018, something changed. City leadership met in strategic planning sessions for the purpose of creating and executing an economic prosperity plan with both short-term and long-term objectives. Today, all evidence suggests that Maricopa is a far cry from where it was less than a decade ago. Our objective remains clear: fostering economic growth, generating local revenue, creating job opportunities, and ultimately improving the well-being of our community. In pursuit of reaching these objectives, Maricopa government officials must employ strategic approaches aimed at bolstering economic growth and vitality. You can choose to sit back and just let whatever happen, happen, or you can choose to be proactive. This council, and the council before you, and the one before you, chose to be proactive, and the evidence is there. I think it was 2015, the city went through a citizen-driven visioning plan, dubbed the 2040 Vision Plan. And in that document, there was a warning, "Committing to a strategic plan raises an immediate and profound question. How, as a result of this strategic plan, will the city have to think and act differently from how it did in the past as it moves towards the future vision?" Now, there were several segments and multiple strategies I want to highlight, too. Establish an inventory of shovel-ready sites designed to encourage the creation of new jobs, and explore opportunities to engage in public-private partnerships that leverage city and private resources, generating a positive economic return. Now, we look to our sister cities, been around 100-plus years, and we look at their industrial parks, and we look at them building these large industrial sites and bringing jobs. Of course, they had 119 years to prepare. We haven't had that long. And you have to lay the foundation. But the foundation has been laid, and now the execution is underway, and now we're going to start seeing the results. Now, growth is actually the top-tier economic tool. Now, think for a moment. Everybody in this room is the benefactor of some job, directly or indirectly. Some business, some for-profit, some nonprofit, whatever, their livelihood is dependent upon some job, some business. Even those who are retired now are able to retire because it used to be tied to a business. Now, what if the philosophy of that business was, we don't want to grow. I don't want to sell more product. I don't want more customers. I don't want to compete. Where would we all be? Living on the streets, I think. So Maricopa is expected to welcome its 100,000th resident by 2029, according to the U.S. Census. Maricopa reported fewer than 60,000 residents in the most recent 2020 census, but our most recent census estimate brought us in in excess of 74,000 people, marking a 23% growth rate. The city's 6% plus annual rate is expected to climb gradually over the next six years, and soon we'll be over 100,000 people, being the 12th city in the state of that size. So in just 20 years, Maricopa surpassed Casa Grande, a century-old, actually 119-year-old city, to become the most populous municipality in Pinellas County. Some individuals, and certainly some communities around the country, take a slow growth, or in some cases, a no-growth stance towards increases in population or development, appearing to assume that further growth is neither desirable nor inevitable. Yet growth is both desirable and inevitable. Growth generates new jobs, income, tax revenue, raises property values, offers residents more choices and diversity. Not growing is not staying the same. Period. Places that do not grow become smaller, often less vibrant. Residents die or migrate. Businesses move or close. Local structures and infrastructure depreciate and eventually must be replaced. Although no-growth policies may be popular with some, in the long run, they are a recipe only for stagnation. There's plenty of examples across the country. Look at St. Louis. They got 241,000. But did you know they had almost 900,000 50 years ago? Have you been to St. Louis lately? Not the tourist part. So there are long-term benefits of growth, and I'm just going to mention three. One is larger size means greater economies of scale, be it a shopping center, a system of hiking or bike trails, strong public safety, an art museum, or a right-sized transportation system. A certain number of consumers, population, in a city are necessary to support the high cost to produce each of these goods and services. Larger size is why the city of Maricopa can offer more while reducing the tax burden annually on its citizens. Larger size means economic benefits derived from clustering. Benefits separate from economies of scale arise from a great number of people or activities locating near each other. Businesses like to sit next to other businesses so they can capture the traffic. They can be serviced by the same service vendors, suppliers, and so forth. The labor pool, none of which is likely to be available in smaller regions. And the last, although there's many, larger size means greater choices and diversity. An increase in population and the subsequent economic activity that it generates creates greater employment choices and employment security. It also provides for greater social diversity, which could include greater tolerance and respect for others, greater choices in cultural retail and restaurant experiences, and greater likelihood of new and innovative ideas. Current benefits of growth? Well, we have this city hall. The new police and dispatch facility, the new library and cultural center, the court facility, Lakeview Park, Copper Sky enhancements, significant infrastructure elements, all without bonding, all without debt, courtesy of growth. Now, we could have just bonded. We would be raising everyone's taxes every year instead of lowering them. Or we could just do without. Or we can invite growth. More retail, medical, and entertainment venues such as Lowe's, Home Depot, Nando's, Tractor Supply, Exceptional Health Hospital, with more soon to come. These and others invested in our community based on present and future growth. I promise you, Home Depot didn't come here because we have 70,000 people. They came here because they believed we will continue to grow. And if we stagnate at 70,000, they will leave. Target left the neighboring city. And Sam's Club, and, and, and. So other current benefits of growth, six years of lower property taxes, enhanced public safety programs, personnel thanks to growth, and a AAA and AA+ bond rating, which led to a reduction in the secondary primary tax and a savings of over $4 million to our citizens. So we have to find equilibrium, the relationship between land development, revenues, and expenditures. Land development impacts local public finance because it generates change in the level of services or quality of services demanded. Forecasting and mitigating the magnitude and direction of these revenues and expenditures change is a central concern of the city of Maricopa. There is a symbiotic relationship between commercial and residential real estate. The connection is very fluid, but it's also very undeniable. They complement each other in the complex dance of development. Now, I chose that word, "complex dance," intentionally because it is as much art as it is science when it comes to finding this equilibrium. When these sectors work in harmony, they create dynamic and thriving communities that benefit everyone. So revenues, expenditures, public service demands, and real estate values all change in response to land development. Every decision that's made, everything that's built, there's an impact. Fact, revenues from housing development do not cover the cost of public services. Period. They are usually between 40 and 60% of the cost. And the truth is, single-family is on the 40 side, and multifamily, higher density, is on the 60% side. So revenues from retail and commercial subsidized funds needed to provide our resident demand for services, they're between 100 and 200%. They pay for the cost. But you can't get the retail unless you have population. See that equilibrium we're trying to find here, that we're trying to talk about? So I hear people say, we shouldn't ever build another house. Well, people need to know, and by the way, this is not new, it's been on our website for years, some of this information's been out there for over a decade. But right now, single-family housing, we have 72,000-plus built and are approved. And some of those go back, you know, to the recession. They're just now starting to regenerate. 26,700 have actually been built or currently under construction, leaving 45,000 approved. So, if we never approved another house, these are already approved. So, what does that 45,000 more units represent? 131,000 population. So, when you combine what we've already built, 205,000. Now, look on the multifamily side, which people say we don't need, yet I heard tonight we need housing options for seniors and lower-income persons. You know, what's wrong with an apartment or condo or townhome? I don't know. We can have them live on the streets or in cars, or they can move to another city, which... But again, what's the number? Less than 4,000. So, when you look at between the two numbers, our built-out population with just what's already approved, and then the works will be over 215,000 population. So, and by the way, when you... People say it's the apartments that are causing all the traffic. These numbers kind of prove that they don't. So, retail development. In 2021, we had just under 90,000 square feet. 22 bumped up to 155,000, then 189,000. This year, we will be in excess of 500,000, which is a 568% increase. Next year, between 500 and a million square feet. Why? Growth, population. Now, some would prefer to drive the 347 to go to a doctor's appointment, or to go to a job, or to go to a retail center, or even a restaurant, or enjoy entertainment opportunities. We spend 400 million... Our citizens spend $400 million a year in other communities. In addition to that, they prefer the drive, prefer spending the extra gas, they prefer the hassles. What if we built it here? What if we stopped at least some of the need for people to drive that road? Doesn't mean we don't have to pay attention to the road, but there's other options that we need to work on, too. So, I want to talk about the municipal land sale options. For many, many years, the state statute provided that for the sale of land, the value had to not exceed $1.5 million, otherwise it would have to be taken to a vote of the people. Now, in 2018, when I got here, you could still buy property on John Wayne Parkway, $2, $3, $4 a square foot. Now, it's $18, $23 a square foot. For a lot of reasons, but it is. So, that didn't work. This past legislative season, and I don't want to take any thunder away from our... But I am. In fact, if September 14, 2024, by authorization of the state legislature and signed into law by the governor, the statute is amended to reflect voter approval for any land sale in excess of $15 million. So, that's a pretty dramatic change. So, the question then is, well, then why did we do Prop. 482? Well, at the time, we didn't know the law would change. And we also wanted to be very transparent, so we put all of our land holdings on there, all of it. Now, not the fire stations, not city hall, but all those other lands. In other words, we might have a master developer who seeks sufficient land assemblage to exceed the $15 million. Now, almost every parcel that's in the packet, that won't reach $15 million. But it's still important that we have the people have a say and have a voice, but state law will preempt that. So, why do we buy land? We buy to remove blight for public health and safety reasons. We buy to support infrastructure, buildings, parks, streets, and yes, roads, to save taxpayer money for future development and to control land use. And I'll address all of those later in the presentation. Why do we sell? Yes, there are some excess parcels that are no longer needed. We like to return to the taxpayer dollars. We want to put it back on the tax rolls. We want to recoup those costs and put it back in the hands of the taxpayers. And land assemblage to support master development economic projects. And a note, there are those that said, "If you sell the land, they're just going to build houses on it." Well, all land development is city-controlled via zoning ordinances. And if the zoning is going to change, there is quite a process through planning and zoning in city council, much like we saw tonight, where there are multiple opportunities for citizens to come and speak to the issue and be heard. So, on land summary, in that packet that was mailed out about Prop. 482, it represents 728 acres, of which 680 of those acres is the land we assembled for an industrial park. We announced six years ago that we had to find land for an industrial park in order to compete against all the other cities and to create jobs. We picked the area we picked because it's close to utilities. The Wapa lines run through there. There's water, there's gas. Global Water has had enough foresight to get permitting to put utilities underneath the railroad track, which takes two to three years to get approved. It's done, it's ready to go. We're distanced from housing, and there's industrial already out there with ethanol plant and others. So, this made sense, and the council said, "That's our spot. That's where we're going to focus." And over the last four years, we have been systematically buying land, which, by the way, we don't buy until it comes on this agenda, gives everyone here an opportunity to speak to it. And I know Bill Robinson over here spoke to it a number of times. He said, "Why are we doing this? And what do we...?" We explained it. And he said, "That makes sense." But those who choose not to come, those who choose not to engage may not know that. But it's been a multi-year process, leaving 48 acres of miscellaneous parcels. And I'll just touch on a few of those as we go through the presentation. The Snoring Creek Marketplace, I think we all agree that's pretty nice. We were happy to get it. Marshalls, Sprouts, Gold Beer &amp; Cheeseburger, a number of other restaurants and other services there. But most people don't know, when the developer came to us and presented the idea, and we got all excited about it, they then come back and said, "It doesn't pencil for us." "What do you mean? We can't make money on it, so we're not going to do it." "What? You mean you have to make money on it?" Well, all businesses look to make money. And by the way, hamburger chains don't come to town unless they think they can sell hamburgers, and they do. They do. So, we, working with the council, again, all this came to a public meeting. See that dirt right behind the buildings? 4.2 acres? The city council bought that dirt. We bought it for $4 a square foot. And then, the project penciled. We bought it from the developer. Then it penciled, and they're able to move it forward. How many jobs did that project create? How much income has that created for the city to support police officers, firefighters, to give us nice parks and all the other services that we have? Now, 4.2 acres aren't going to... Probably didn't exceed $1.5 million, certainly not going to exceed $15 million, but we have a bid already for $6.50 on it. "That sounds all right to me," and then it goes back on the property tax rolls. But there would be some saying, "Don't sell that land." So, it's going to stay a vacant dirt lot for perpetuity? That doesn't make sense. So, South Bridge, the new overpass created an opportunity, and the council saw this opportunity. And we were instructed to go out and purchase the land representing most of the area in the pink buildings. We bought it because if we hadn't of, it would have been a church. Now, we love our churches, but this is a high-visibility area. It would have been a storage unit. It would have been a private school or public school. It would have been another storage unit facility. And the council said, "No, this is a prime spot with the most traffic in the entire city, and we have to save it for something that makes sense. Plus, did we want to piecemeal it, or we want to put it out?" So, the city put out a... Bought the land years ago, and we put out an invitation for a bid for a developer to develop it for retail purposes. And we awarded the bid ultimately. And of course, Lowe's pulled their permit last week. They probably have started already. In addition, Aldi has been announced, and all those other pads, although they've not shared the names, they have letters of intent on all of them. More jobs, more taxes for the city, more ability to meet a lot of the needs that people talked about this evening. Across the street, there's two, roughly two acres that the city's owned for a number of years. We put it out to bid, too, and Elevate Trampoline Park has expressed interest in developing. By the way, have any of these been sold for housing yet? No. And do we need more entertainment, more things for kids to do and families to do? Now, I want to be clear, until it's built and open, but they presented this plan, and they're moving it forward at this point in time. The Copper Sky Medical Campus of Mixed Use. Now, that's been on again, off again, and remember, we're in a high-inflation situation where it's still hard to get product. I mean, even our own PD has been delayed opening for a couple of months, waiting on switch gears or something like that. We can't even get light poles for signals. It's taken half a year to get some of that stuff. Now, they've indicated, maybe they'll build the hospital, maybe they want, but the purpose of it was to create jobs. And whether it's a medical office building or other options, those will be explored. And whatever it is will meet the criteria that we laid out, that this would be fulfilling public need. You know, you really have to go all the way out of town to buy a mattress? Can't even buy a mattress in this town, right? And I hope they're cheaper in this town than they were in the other towns, because they're expensive. And then we have the middle section. By the way, that first section we talked about, we bought that land about four years ago. It was never part of the park, it wasn't bought with a bond issue. But we saved it again because it would have been piecemealed out. We wanted to, we have a master developer to come in and do it right. Now, the section in the brown color, that's the Assisted Living Center. Now, their permit is ready to be pulled. They had to start all over again because after COVID, they had to redesign all those centers. Each room has to have its own ventilation system now, and of course, the cost went up. So, that one is ready to start, and they have moved forward on the white, which is the same developer. And they just recently turned in their new pad designs, and that's the newest rendering of their buildings that was side, both sides of Martin Luther King. I think that's pretty attractive. And if you look at the one on the right, if you look at that kind of orange color along the road corridor, that's all retail. Okay? And then we have the civic center out here. That's where we are now in the land out here. And I won't get into the wording on this slide, but I do want to mention that, I think, 2008, I think the other mayor Smith was mayor at that time, Tony Smith, that council had enough foresight to buy this land, and guess what? They paid $0.47 a square foot for it. $3 million. Land value today is almost $50 million. Could you imagine if the council said, "Well, let's don't buy the land until we're ready to build the library. Let's don't buy the land until we're ready to build a courthouse." They saved you money because of their foresight. And guess what? Of that 142 acres, yes, 24 of those acres is going to be sold for some retail and a little bit for some housing. But that acreage is going to generate $8.36 million, almost three times what we paid for it. And there's a restaurant row. Now, it's all moving forward, but again, until you hear the cash register ring, it may or may not happen. By the way, that's just a concept drawing of the civic center, subject to change, but that's just an early concept, and some early concepts. And so, the biggest chunk of the land, though, is 680 acres, which is the industrial park. It has potential rail access. There's already a rail spur there, an opportunity for additional rail spur. It already has all the utilities well-positioned. It aligns with the east-west corridor and a favored site of ACA. And so, we identified this, like I said, about six, eight, six years ago. And we started focusing on it, and systematically we began to buy property so that we can position ourselves, because you can't put in a rail spur in utilities to site 50-acre industrial park. There has to be that economies of scale, remember that? So, if you look at the land with the blue stars, with the exception of the pink circle and blue star, that's the 680 acres. Now, the other, the yellow and the kind of orange, dark orange and the pink, those are properties that probably can be added, because at the end of the day, you want economies of scale. You want to benefit from the millions of dollars, which, by the way, a developer will put in, not the city, of infrastructure, whether it be electrical, gas, water, roads, rail, whatever it is. So, we, as in my group, put out an invitation for a bid some time ago, not knowing what to expect, but just to get the word out there. Now, we're going to show you a little bit about what we received. Now, we will have to go through a process, and we'll know that process more clearly in about two weeks. But in most cases, the $15 million threshold will take care of us. But frankly, if somebody wanted all that land for master development, we need the ability to sell it. Or we can't move forward with some options. So, at this point, I'm going to invite Christian Price to come up and walk us through some of those bids, and then I'll come back up for a few slides, and then we'll have a few more after that.
Mayor Council, thank you very much, and thank you, Rick. You've done a fantastic job of outlining this, and we know it's a lot, and it's a lot of slides and information, but I'm just going to very quickly, very briefly, go through some of these things, because we've just talked about land and vision and understanding and why we do this. But you also have to understand that when you're talking about the big things from... We've just gone from retail, but what about not driving the 347 because we're employed here now? What if we have really cool businesses that are operating here, and they're not just on the retail side, but they're industry, right? And so, like you said, you know, sometimes these things take a really long time, and we want them to go, you know, quickly overnight, but that's not always how it works. And if I can figure out the clicker here, that'd be fantastic. That's the wrong one. There we go. So, I want to tell you that six years ago, we had this series of groups come to us and start this conversation, and then things throughout the course of history, the financing, and challenges come up. We have to just deal with it. And if we don't, then, you know, if every time someone said no to us, we just turned tail and went the other way, we'd never get anything done. These large projects take time, they take effort, they take sustained interest, and that's our job. But I want to, I want to point out to you the successes that are right on the cusp of our horizon, and it's about to change everything, and Rick will talk more about that. But I'm going to give you quickly here, by permission, we have, of the three or four that I'm going to mention tonight, we have permission to say their names, and then there's one that we cannot say at this time. But this is the first one, Envision Waste. And right now, they're looking at a capex, which is a capital investment into the community, of $64 million, buying approximately 25 acres that the city will own or did own. It's going to provide about 80 jobs, and it's about a $56,000 average. Now, there's going to be higher wages and lower wages, but this is the average. And it's going to be a mixed waste processing facility, but you're going to see why this is important. Remember, Rick talked about clustering? Clustering is really important for a variety of reasons. It's not only important for driving other businesses to the area, but it also puts you on the map in the industries, because people always want to know, "Why did that industry locate there, and what am I missing? What should I be paying attention to?" We see that in retail all the time, but it's amazing to see it on the large-scale industrial. But you have to help solve the problems. You have to get the utilities going. You have to get the land put together. And if you don't have those things, then you simply don't get this interest. So, it's fascinating to see what's on the horizon. This is another one. Now, we don't have permission to use their name at this time, but again, it's a plastics renewal origination, and this happens because of the previous entity that I just showed you. They are putting a... And these are conservative numbers, by the way. This is a capex between 600,000 and 800,000, but I can tell you they're talking over $1 billion of investment. A billion dollars in Maricopa, okay? This, they're going to create 200 jobs, about 50,000 average. Again, very conservative numbers, but they utilize locally-generated plastic waste, mitigate environmental hazards of landfills, technology that produces hydrocarbon liquids that can be repurposed into plastics and other circular products. Again, so whether you like green or not, you're about to put green into the economy, and you're about to put green in Maricopa on the map in a whole new industry in something that's never existed here before. It's very exciting.
Christian, one second.
Yes.
Go back to that slide.
Go back to that slide for me just one second. You mentioned, and it's not a correction, I just wanted to follow up on it, you said the capex is six hundred to eight hundred thousand. We're talking about six hundred, eight hundred million.
Yes, correct, thank you. Thank you very much. So the next one is a group called Prescott Composites. And Prescott Composites, Prescott Renewables, and it's a multiplicity, kind of an umbrella company, amazing individuals, but they give you a system and series of different companies that they have different partners with. So again, one umbrella company can bring five or six others, and they are clustering with these others. So Prescott Composites, they do CF composite construction or structures. Prescott Renewables in frontline, they do conversion of waste to energy and precursor materials. Prescott Composites also does graphite and graphene materials and battery components, and they do this with another partner. And then also, and again, Prescott's partner, and another partner, do CNT and intermediate concrete and batteries. So again, you're taking waste, you're putting it down the line, everybody is participating in this participation, and it's coming out as something that can be completely reused and recycled and put back into the industry of doing amazing things. So again, this capex is between seven hundred and one point eight billion for a hundred and seventy-two acres. The average wage is somewhere between sixty thousand and a hundred and ten thousand, again, conservative numbers, but we want to start there. And then they will grow this in phases as they take down this hundred and seventy-two acres from twenty twenty-five at about a hundred and sixty jobs, all the way through twenty twenty-nine, to which they'll have a total of about twenty-six hundred jobs, okay? This project is vertically integrated in advanced composites technology firm. Folks, this is just the start, and when something like this locates, it's so exciting, because what it does is it puts you on the map, and suddenly others go, "I want to know what you're doing and why they're there, and how do I get a piece of that too?" So we have to do our part, we have to wait our time, and we certainly have to put in the longevity, but exciting things are on the horizon here. I'll turn it back over to Rick.
You know, when I talk about concrete, it's not traditional concrete. They talk about graphene, we're talking about a product that is stronger than steel, but much more lighter weight. We're talking about a concrete that uses waste materials, and they actually intend to build their park infrastructure of some of those materials, so people can actually see it and be a part of it. But then we received another statement of interest. This statement of interest would be a complete metamorphosis of the city with the potential of thirty-seven thousand jobs. Now, I said that correctly, thirty-seven thousand jobs. But let's say they only do half. I'm pretty happy. Let's say they do three thousand. I'm pretty happy, right? In addition to that, there'll be over five thousand temporary construction jobs, and their capex will be in excess of one billion dollars. There'll be forty million in new infrastructure, and when they say infrastructure, that's our infrastructure. And there'll be over five million in new property taxes. Now, that's just the base tax of what they build. That is not the residual taxes of what comes in their buildings and their structures. And if they sell products that we collect sales tax on and all those type of things, and that's just what would come to the city. In addition to that, the county would benefit, the school district would benefit, so many other groups would benefit as well. They would also build between five hundred and two thousand onsite housing. If you're aware of it, the chip plant up here in Chandler, they're building five hundred apartments right on the site, because they want to make sure there's housing for their employees. If they're attracting people from all over the country and all over the world to come work there, and they say, "Well, I can't find a house," or "The interest rates are too high." They want to avoid that. And these people want to build housing on their industrial site too, for their employees to make sure they have a place, but also as an incentive to come work there. It's in the industrial park area, so it's not in anyone's backyard again, and they would be interested in the entire six hundred and eighty acres. Now, in this particular case, I don't think they can acquire six hundred and eighty acres for under fifteen million dollars. I'm just guessing here, but I think it's a good guess. So they have options. They could build less, develop less, leave it alone, or our citizens can support us moving forward with this. It's their choice. So if they buy all six hundred and eighty, and that's all we have, how do we fit all the ones Christian talked about? Well, we may need more land. So that pink circle with the blue dot in it, that's next on your agenda, hundred and seventy-two acres. That will meet the needs mostly for all the Prescott pieces that are there, and they're ready to go. Matter of fact, they'd like to be in a position to make announcement in six weeks, eight weeks, but they don't want their competition to know until they're ready to go. So that's on the agenda tonight. And by the way, yes, we're paying a bitty, pretty penny for it, but we will get all that money back when we sell the land and then some. And those excess funds will go into other infrastructure needs, including, where's the next thousand-acre industrial park? Because we can't just pull our eggs in one basket. I know you can't read that, but in essence, they're talking about twelve point six million square feet of Class A industrial space, another six hundred and thirty-seven thousand in office space. And to give you a sense, they'll need fifteen thousand parking spaces to accommodate it. Now, people are already saying, "I was going to put a lot of traffic on the road." Well, I hope a lot of those employees live here. And others will be coming into town when others are going out. And we'll start to have the money to do the infrastructure, and I want to hearken back to that. If we really want to be a status quo city in slow grow or no grow, infrastructure is a status quo, no grow, slow grow too. None of these road issues and other issues get fixed. They just stay there forever. And the opposite will happen, either grow or die. Just to give you some sense of what they're talking about, manufacturing, distribution, logistical companies, food manufacturers, I'll give you one example. There was a farm, it's about, memory serves, it was about twenty-four hundred acres, that produced tomatoes and lettuce for the McDonald's Corporation. They now are serviced on a seven-acre site inside a fully enclosed building, and they don't use dirt, and they use, it's not, it's not really a hyperponics, but it's in that line and thinking. They use less water, less dirt, and they can produce it year-round, not seasonable, because other times of year, they have to buy it from other nations. So those are all prospects. Grocery distributions, cold storage, bottling facilities, chip manufacturing, research and development, water, solar chip manufacturing, social media, film and animation, data center, graphene manufacturing, battery manufacturing, Amazon fulfillment center, or any other type of fulfillment center. But these are the types of things that they will be going after. Vegetables, flowers, biomedical, plastic, car manufacturing, or car parts more likely, and tractor manufacturing. So there's lots of opportunities. Now, this isn't going to happen overnight, but I can tell you, they have a six hundred thousand square foot tenant that is anxious to go, and they want to know if they can do their planning concurrently with the master planning of all this to get there. And I'm also told there is a worldwide logistics company that lives in a state on the coast to the west that wants to get out. I don't know why. They want to get out, and they like this potential here, because they still can serve that customer, but they can reduce their cost dramatically as a part of that. So now, after Tuesday, two weeks from now, we'll decide and put out official bids, and if someone, we're going to go with the best bid, the best company, the best opportunity. But I will put this slide up just to give you a sense of how serious these people are. This is the team. I'm just going to pick a few. Wendell McCain on the bottom, no relationship to Barry, I don't think. Managing member of Onset Capital Partners, a global asset management firm, managing member, a private equity firm with two billion under management. He's the finance guy. Red Watkins, forty-five years of international master planning work, project development architecture. Ruben Smith, the managing partner of Frost Brown Todd Law Practice. And I realize that name may not mean much to you, but they're big boys. And then you look at Anthony Monos up there. He used to work for the Irvine Company, Brookfield Properties, Westfield Properties. These are major developers throughout the nation and throughout the world, yet they are interested in little old Maricopa. So I said, "Why?" Here's what they said. Well, first off, it's a great location. It's in Arizona. You got water, you got the right land, you got the utilities, but here's the main reason they gave. They said, "Because this city is doing it right. This city is different because they want to create a partnership to make things work. We want to engage people and work to find a way, to find the solutions that Christian was talking about." And I hope if we go through the formal bid process, to introduce you to some of these people and let them tell you their own story about why here. But I, just a few more slides here. Population is significant. These two spots are located on Honey, Bollin Road in Hartman. And everyone says, "When are we going to get some retail out here?" Well, a couple of plans have been submitted now. Now, they're not going to develop tomorrow. And people are saying, "Well, we constantly are rezoning housing to commercial." Well, in some cases, we have, because it makes sense to do that, but the opposite is true too. The one on the right side of the road and the right side, I think it was just a month or so ago, the planning commission approved reducing the housing land and adding more commercial. And as you look at that, there's one, two, three, four, five, six pads, there's a medium, small pad, and there's a pad that's probably big enough to house a grocer. I don't know, that would be nice. And then there's a midsize pad there. All of a sudden, they're interested, but only because there's rooftops out there. There's population out there. Don't build any more homes, you know what they're going to say? "I'm not going to invest money and bring grocery store or whatever else might come out there." Major commercial spurs, minor commercial. This is the Wells at Stone Gate, and everyone knows where the new Home Depot's being built. You see, there's five new retail pads under item I in blue. Home Depot did something that they said they, not sure they've ever done before. They bought other land beyond what they need for their Home Depot. Part of that because traditionally, they only pay like eight dollars a square foot. And it's difficult for people to sell at that price, but sometimes you can sell that price, because then makes the adjoining parcels where you can get twenty or twenty-three dollars for them. Well, Home Depot, I think, recognized that, I don't know, but they bought them, and of course, there are already plans been submitted for two of those sites, I believe Starbucks and Panda Express, and, you know, but, you know, there's other things coming out there. But look at the housing. You got traditional housing, you had high-density housing, that's what they want, or they wouldn't This is the six acres on the east side of Walmart. That plan's been submitted now. Another hundred thousand or so square feet. Copper Sky, and you see all the colored area, which is mostly housing, but look at A, that's Vestar, a major retail developer. And they could build anywhere from four hundred to eight hundred thousand. And they've owned the land for fifteen years. We even had a master plan with them that was good for twelve years, that's now expired. They asked us to just re-up it, but, you know, we were giving away the kitchen sink back then, we don't need to do that today. But that might be where you find the, might be where you find the target and the coals and some of those other things that we need in town. And it's along the road to nowhere called the desert, Snoring Desert Parkway. I thought we should have named it the road to prosperity, but prosperity, excuse me, because I think it really is. This is the Seven Ranches area. We worked for years and years and years to resolve the water issue, and as soon as we did, it's blossomed. And by the way, this chart, you can't keep up with the new developments. There's new stuff already planned out. You may have heard of the pizza place and a few other things coming. They're coming just because we solved the water problem. And I'm going to turn it over to Rachel. Now, Rachel should be home with her leg propped up. She almost broke her foot, but her dedication being here tonight speaks well, so.
Thank you, Rachel.
Don't click your heels when you're done.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, everyone. I'm going to speak to you about our retail incubator project, as is shown in the slides that Rick has so graciously presented for us. The city is responsive to the needs of the business community. We have had many requests for a space for our small and micro businesses. This gives us an opportunity to answer the call. So repurposing underutilized government buildings can be a powerful strategy for economic development and community enhancement, and the city is being responsive by considering the old police administration building as a retail incubator for our micro businesses. The objectives here are to provide affordable and flexible retail space, foster collaboration and networking, offer resources and support services, including mentorship, workshops, business development resources and more, stimulate economic growth by attracting foot traffic to our central business district, boosting local spending, contributing to our overall economic vitality in the city of Maricopa. And one other thing that I definitely want to mention is that this will allow us to build partnerships with local government agencies, economic development organizations, educational institutions, and community stakeholders. This is another way that we can promote business in Maricopa, garner support, access resources, and promote retail incubate, the retail incubator as a catalyst for economic revitalization. We want to make sure that our community stakeholders are also committed to this project, because it's going to take more than just what the city offers. This is an opportunity for those individuals, entrepreneurs who've been working from home, maybe out of their garages, but they need a place to showcase their creation. So this is a product-oriented space for our incubators. There will be opportunities for pop-ups, so sometimes people don't want to necessarily go through a program, but they just want to see if it'll work, and we're looking forward to providing that opportunity. So I am excited about the project. I'm excited about all those who are offering services still. We have some of our utilities who offered services before, and they're doing it again. I've had calls from individuals. So I'm just looking forward to what we will be able to provide as a service, and thank you all for your support.
Rachel, not, don't stop, keep going, but Councilmember Wade said, "Where do I get the keys?"
Rachel was so excited about it, she failed to show a couple of the slides. But the, the old PD building is being looked at for repurposing, and part of that would be the retail incubator, not a service incubator, it's not for tax preparers, but product people. And again, there will be weekend activities and things, and we plan to partner with the private sector to make this happen. This is not, government's role is not to do this for the people, it's to provide opportunity, and then the people step up and do that themselves. Just a few other pictures, you've seen stuff like this, but it's to get, it's important to note that where we want the big businesses, it's also important to incubate the small businesses. And the truth is, we need them all. We need them all. And persons shouldn't have to go out there and sign a three-year lease to find out if their product works. And one last one. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Christian for a few more slides, and then I'll have a closing comment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Rick and Rachel. Obviously, I know we've thrown a lot at you. I hope what you're seeing here is that this office is working like crazy to make these things happen with your vision and with the citizens' vision, and there's some amazing opportunities out there. Very, very briefly, I just want to talk about one other opportunity, and that is the UofA property. As you may or may not know, this is twenty-one hundred acres that sits on the northeast side of the city between us and the Gila River, and twenty-one hundred acres is really hard to come by in a cohesive area. Now, things have happened at UofA, but I want to give you a very quick backstory, and that is, is that- And that is, is that the city and its vision had the understanding to approach the U of A proactively and say, hey, you guys are farming this, and it's fantastic. That's what it was. It's a land-grant university, and this was given by some of our forefathers here in the city of Maricopa to the U of A to do so. And obviously, the USDA has a presence out there. But they, over the years, they've only started farming and kept farming just a small portion of it. And so the other is sitting fallow, and it's not being utilized to its highest and best possibility. So the city went and said, hey, wait a second. What if we partnered with you to find a way to make this more fruitful for everybody involved? And so what we did is we went with them in partnership with Pinal County and the U of A and the, and U of A Tech Parks and Malcolm Green, who was in charge of the facility at this time, and the senior leadership in the council. And we said, hey, what if we went out and got a federal EDA grant? Okay? And with that, that EDA grant, it gave us the ability, uh, we won it, by the way, which is fantastic, it was $400,000. We were able to basically put in a master plan and a vision for what this could become. That is critical because you can't build something, you don't know where you're trying to get to, right? So what we did with this is collectively, we basically put together this, this plan. And we also brought in a renowned economist, as you well know, Jim Rounds from Rounds Economy. Uh, and he basically did some really cool things. Now, the challenge I'm telling you all this for is that this project, like so many major projects, sometimes hits the skids that have nothing to do with us, right? I, I love when I hear that the city's blocking this or the city's blocking that. That's not the case, right? This is a great example of a major project hitting the skids because it ran into problems. And these problems actually came from the U of A. They had a little financing glitch, which has caused a problem. And so now they have stalled the project, which is unfortunate. But I told you earlier, if we took no every time, you know, as an answer that someone came to us with a no, we'd never get anywhere. So we continue to prod, we continue to poke, we continue to offer solutions because we know that over time, as we continue to offer that pressure, we will win. We will succeed, and we will find a way to make this come to fruition. And so that's what we're working on. This was a product of the vision of some of this. I'm going to get to it in just a second. But this was kind of that cornerstone there at Honeycutt and Porter, or White and Parker. And basically, it's saying, hey, look, this is a first entry point. This is where the utilities are located right on that corner. What if we were able to kind of start developing inward? I kind of call this the stealth bomber look of, uh, of development. But, uh, you know, at the end of the day, this is a mixed-use component, but there's some really cool things that are come from it. And this is what they said, is they said, look, if we do a 300-acre technology park, we do 600 acres of innovation, we do an education campus where you have a satellite campus of the University of Arizona, right here in Maricopa. You know, one of the cool things you may or may not know is that University of Arizona finally, finally realized that 60% of their students come from the Phoenix metro area. Well, guess what? We're right here in the Phoenix metro area. Doesn't it make sense to have a campus here? Think of the engineers, think of the research and development. Think of the product, that the workforce, that all of these jobs that Rick just mentioned, the 56,000 of them, and all these other ones we're talking about tonight. What if we were training them here? Keeping them off the 347, training them here so that our kids had a place to go from K1 all the way through, through graduation, and then getting jobs and training so they know where they're going. The ACA is fantastic. That's the Arizona Commerce Authority. It's fantastic at coming in and working together with an industry, a, a city, and basically creating a program that tailors the education that is needed so that people can go through and come out of high school and, and go in through, through college, and then come through a tailored, uh, training program so they can get a job at a given, at a given, uh, industry. This is so powerful, folks. Now, again, it's not the end-all, be-all, but I do want to show you in a synopsis, based on the numbers that we did conservatively, and this is not us, this is Rounds Consulting, okay? But I want to point something out. This is why we do economic development. This is why you buy land with future thoughts. And this is why this whole presentation has been wrapped up in this bow just like this. Is that if you kind of look through here, in that economic output, and it's kind of the one that, that has the biggest punch, but I want to show it to you. Uh, this is a five-year, 10-year, 15-year window if this project was to develop in its phases and come to its fullest completion. And if it did that, annually, it would produce $11 billion for this region, just in that location. But collectively or cumulatively, over the years, plus all of the other economic output that it does, it would be $96 billion worth of economic generation for the constituents of this city. Now, I don't know who you are, but I don't have $96 billion laying around, but I sure think it would make a huge impact to us. And if you kind of go down tax revenues, that's 178 million that goes to, to us and to the school districts in Pinal County. That's a huge punch. And then jobs, 51,000 jobs. And then all the way down to employment income. This, again, is all the ancillary employment that this type of thing draws. And I cannot tell you that, as I have been out there previously with MITA and now at the city, I cannot tell you that when I talk about this property and I talk about the value of this partnership and seeing something like this come to fruition, it is fantastic. The amount of ears that perk up, the amount of industries that are interested. And I'm telling you, this is just the beginning. So there are exciting things on the horizon. Let's not give up. Let's keep moving forward. And I'll close it out and turn it back over to Rick.
But I would be remiss. The whole U of A thing started because I asked Rudy and his team to put together a plan for out there. And I, I think we forget just how talented our people are, how diverse they are, how multifaceted they are. And to get that in the private sector, you're going to pay a heck of a lot more for it. I want to close with this quote from Terry Maxwell. "The soul is what drives us to grow, achieve, search, learn, all in a singular quest to become more. Whether a business or a human," and I'm going to add, "or a city, if we squelch this life force, the process of dying ensues. The choice is ours, moment by moment." With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or receive any comments, should you have any.
Well, like you said, it was a plethora of information, but I loved every single bit of it. And so what hundred questions do you all have? What questions do you have, councilmembers, or thoughts or comments?
I think we could afford a senior center if this happens. I think we could put it in the budget.
Well, those other communities took 50, 60, 70 years to get those. We're going to get them sooner, but we don't get them unless we lay the foundation.
But we do have one.
Right, we do have one. And it's.
We do have one.
Yeah.
So we have 70,000 people, 70-plus thousand people. How do we get this message to the rest of the folks?
Well, you know, we always say, how do we get the message to them? And we have to do everything we can to get the message to them. But I would encourage our citizens to incorporate their citizenship and participate. They don't have to come. They can sit at home and watch these meetings. They can read. The minutes are out there, they're available. Our media does a good job of putting information out. Everything we talked about tonight, none of this is new. None of it, other than the progress and the fact we're now to the point where we're going to start getting hits, it's out there.
Could you give some consideration to a little mini road show?
Yes, I, I, uh, do tap dance and Christian sings. We're not going to let Rachel tap dance, so she can tell jokes, maybe. But I hope this was helpful. I apologize for taking so much time, but I think it's important that we encompass the entire story in order to tell the story. Now, there's still going to be some that say, I moved here for a quiet little town. Well, if you moved here for a quiet little town, you didn't read the general plan of the city.
Or the Vision 2040.
Or the Vision 2040 Plan. And, you know, there's places out there for that. And frankly, if you don't want a neighbor, you need to buy a bigger lot. You know?
Well, thank you.
I like my neighbors.
Mr. Horst, I appreciate all that you and your staff have done. You guys were spectacular. Thank you, Christian, thank you, Rachel, thank you, Dr. Joshua. Uh, thank you very much. Um, we appreciate it, and I'm excited. And thank you, staff, because the entire staff helps to put this together. So City Manager, thank you for all that is done to help this be coordinated very nicely. All right? That, yes, what? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Nobody raised their hand. Okay, councilmember.
I thought you were going to say, who else wants to say something? I apologize.
I normally do it two times, I'm sorry.
I'm usually not quiet, but I'm being quiet. You know, when, when Rick just said that all this information has been out there, it has. I mean, all this information is out there for everybody to see. Um, but it's, it's amazing that sometimes we, we kind of, um, choose to not see it. And I don't know why, but sometimes it's chosen not to see it because they don't want to see, some people don't want to see the good. Out of this meeting today, we had, what was it, an hour? I don't even know how long was that they were speaking, an hour? So we had an hour presentation of good, 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 good. But somewhere in there, someone's going to pull something out of there, probably 500 to 2,500 housing units in an industrial complex and go, oh, look! They're bringing more houses. And they'll complain about that, but they won't look at the fact that it's surrounded by industrial work. Um, it's surrounded, it's going to be owned by the businesses that are there for their employees because, like we found out, when you want to hire good people, unfortunately, sometimes you got to look at ways that you can get them to stay and look at ways you can get them to move to your community. Because nothing's worse than having employees that have to drive two hours or an hour to get to work. And you got to hope they get there, um, because you have things like the 347. So having people that live here and work here and recreate here is so important. You know, and when I look at 37,000 jobs, I don't know if 37,000 jobs are coming. Nobody knows that. But if I saw 5,000 or 7,000 jobs, that's a lot of freaking jobs in the city of Maricopa. We have three businesses in the city of Maricopa that actually employ people in a large amount. And that is the school district, the city of Maricopa, and auction. That's it. And combined, I don't even think it's 3,000 jobs. Um, so when you look at the ability to bring work and good-paying work to the city of Maricopa, and then you have people say, bringing Rick in and keeping Rick on, on board as economic development, bringing Christian on board and Rachel on board, and everybody that we have working on this stuff is a waste of money. Sometimes people will say that. No, it's not. The city of Maricopa is thriving. I moved here because I like this place. I stay here because I love this place and I've grown to love it. And people come here because they, like me, want that and like you. So for us to say, we don't want you anymore to the people that want to move here, it's ridiculous. It's simply ridiculous. People want to live here because this is a great place to live, and it's going to get even better. The churches that are coming, the schools that are coming, the microschools that are opening, the charter schools that are opening, the new schools that are being built, the new retail, the new industrial, the new everything, just makes this a better place to be. So I love this, uh, presentation, and I was smiling throughout. Usually, by halfway, half an hour in, I'd be kind of nodding off. But I liked it. It was good. It gave me a good view of what we can expect in the next 10, oh, five, oh, two, two to 10 to five, 15 years, and what we'll see here in the city of Maricopa. So thank you, guys and ladies.
All right, second round, second chance. Don't want to cut anyone off? All right, very good. Thank you very much, Rick Horst, for that presentation, Christian, Rachel, and Joshua. Um, that'll take us to 8.3, which is another presentation by City, by Rick Horst. 8.3, you have nothing to add?
Well, I referenced my presentation about the Morik family.
Yeah, it's the property, yep. I know, but it's on the agenda.
I, um, as I read through the list of those who have interest in bringing jobs to the community, I told you that there's not enough land. So one of the items here is the purchase of 172 acres from the Morik family. And if we're going to accommodate jobs and, and the clustering that we talked about, I would encourage the council to vote in affirmative.
Very good. Councilmembers, any comments, questions, concerns? Yes, City Manager?
Just want to make note, this was included within our budget this year. So not that this is outside of the budget, this was included within the budget.
Very good, very good. Yes. A motion to move by Vice Mayor Lierman. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Marsh. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Just.
Aye.
Just to clarify, this is the big square in the industrial triangle, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Very good. All right, that'll take us to 8.4, which is a presentation by Katie Proctor.
Mayor, I've been told I have an hour, so.
You have an hour? Oh, my God.
Are you kidding?
Holy cow, who did that?
Oh, you know who. Mayor and Council, um, I'm here tonight to talk to you about our 2024 legislative session. I'll make this quick. Please feel free to ask questions as we go along, and I will try to figure out how this works. I got it. All right, so you may recall back in January, we had a conversation about the platform that you wanted to adopt. And this is basically heavy on supporting local control and supporting infrastructure projects. And so we're really going to focus on that tonight as we talk about the session. Few facts from the session, um, 1,660 bills. Believe it or not, that is the second highest number of bills introduced at the state legislature so far. In fact, the last five years have been the five largest, highest numbers of bills introduced. Um, pretty much post-pandemic, we've seen an increase in the number of bills introduced overall. We're not seeing as many bills actually go into law, though. Part of that is the last two years, there's been a lot of vetoes. Um, and there's been other factors in there as well. We only had 259 bills signed into law this year. 160-day session. I did want to point out, we did have quite a large number of folks resign this year. That's important for continuity purposes. Those are folks that are sometimes on leadership. They're sometimes on committees, um, and they have bills that they've sponsored. So that does affect our ability to move session in an effective manner. Um, most legislation this year will become effective on September 14th. And your staff is already working to implement bills that affect the city of Maricopa. State budget. This was predominantly the biggest issue that we dealt with this session. Um, when it came to the state budget, we had two things going on. We had the existing fiscal year budget for 2024 that needed to be reduced quickly and effectively to meet the obligations and the restrictions on revenue. And then we needed to also enact a new fiscal '25 budget. Anytime you're making that kind of reduction mid-year, you're mostly looking at one-time sweeps and fund transfers to accomplish that because you can't operationalize cuts at that point in session. So that's what they did. They made a number of one-time sweeps and transfers. Um, and then they did enact some cuts, um, in the fiscal '25 budget. You'll see those operationally up there as well. Um, some interesting things like changing regulatory board structure, um, some large, uh, sweeps from the Water Finance Authority Group, um, and also a shift of opioid settlement monies from the Attorney General. That is embarrassing. I apologize. Gosh. You know, I kind of feel like that's how session's been this year. Anyway, so when it comes to infrastructure, and this is probably the biggest issue we talk about on budget, um, what we're looking at are some delays in projects. And I want to be careful and use that term delay because there's another way that you could have done this. The legislature could have line-itemed out those appropriations and just walked away from it. And they did not do that. They moved those appropriations into fiscal '28. So they are still physically in law. And if they were to decide they didn't want to fund them, they'd have to come back again and make that decision in fiscal '28. That is really important as we consider that. Those monies are still there for the Rigs TI on 347 and also for the East-West Corridor design money. The piece that's not there is that $70 million for pavement preservation. And I do want to take a moment to just point that out because that's significant. As you know, our state transportation board has allocated 78% of their revenues towards pavement preservation. You will see that come back throughout the program. Um, and that will probably come back in terms of reductions to other expansion projects. So that is a significant reduction. Um, we also were fortunate, we did receive some funds in supplemental for design work that's still going on, on the 347. That's important to complete those, uh, design projects and get us to shovel-ready status. Um, right now, we're probably looking at, um, being able to go out for bid in late '26, according to ADOT. With the new funding that's, uh, operationalized in this budget, we could turn dirt as early as July 1 of 2027. So we don't have that big of a gap, even though it is fiscal '28. Just remember that starts on Janu, uh, July 1 of '27. The legislature also sent 11 items to the ballot for the November election this year. Um, four of those were last session, and then the remainder were the session. So that's all of those up there. There's quite a few, a lot of good stuff there to, to go through later on when we get the ballots. Um, remember that for these, they are effective upon canvas if they pass. So we will start working on some implementation measures as we get closer to that point, just in case. Another big issue this year was water legislation. Um, 1172, you probably heard about this. This was the Agricultural Conversion Credit Bill. Um, it was vetoed by the governor. Um, and it's a very contentious issue in a, uh, kind of along that lines with 1221, which was the Rural Groundwater Act as well. That did not make it either. Um, it's important to note that as we go forward, there is a potential for special session. It's important to note that as we go forward, there is a potential for special session on water issues, and we're probably looking at some ongoing work with the Governor's Water Policy Council to decide if that's feasible this year or not. There are a lot of outstanding issues on groundwater right now, and so look forward to continuing to work to see what we can accomplish in that space. Now for the fun stuff. So you asked us at the beginning of January to really pay attention to what was out there affecting local control, and I have to tell you, Mayor and Council, that housing legislation was the number-one issue this year that was affecting local control. We saw a lot of housing bills that would have taken away your authority to make important decisions about the city and how it grows and take our residents out of that conversation about how their community shapes up. So we worked really hard this year to get these bills from where we started to where we finished. And I do want to just make a couple notes here. It's really important to know that what you see in front of you is not how we started the session, not at all. They were pretty, pretty difficult. It's also important to note that anytime you see a population threshold, by law, that is operationalized on the next decennial census. So you're going to see a couple of those in here. Keep in mind that that will not affect the city of Maricopa operationally until the next decennial census. Please know that when we deal with these bills, we assume they affect us now because that threshold could change at any point in time throughout session, and we don't want to make any assumptions about that. It could also change next year by another bill. So we always assume as we're engaging with our legislators on these bills that they could affect us right now, and we try to visualize them from that policy platform. Adaptive reuse, there was a lot of push this year to move commercial back to residential and to make that process faster. This bill will apply to larger cities, and as you can see there, that's the focus, is to turn back vacant commercial to residential. Senate Bill 1162 has two components. This is a zoning, moves up the zoning process. It also has a housing needs assessment component, and we're currently going through the implementation process on this one right now. You've heard about accessory dwelling units. We call them ADUs or casitas or tiny homes. This bill requires municipalities greater than 75,000 to permit ADUs in the backyards, and there is no design restriction at all, even if you can see it from the front yard, from the street. There's nothing on design in there at all. It is important to note that the legislature did protect, which it's a private property, right, the contract right with your HOA. So if your HOA oversees how ADUs function, they will continue to oversee that. Anywhere that does not have an HOA does not have that. So that's the way this one's going to work. 2721 is the concept of middle housing, which is duplex, triplex, fourplex. These will be required to be allowed, again, for a population greater than 75,000 within one mile of a central business district by right, and then they have to be allowed in at least 20% of any new development greater than 10 acres. So this will be something that we're looking at going forward. It is important to note that this does exempt your water improvement districts. And then these are the bills that did not pass, and really, the one I want to point out here is 2570, and I want to thank everybody for their work on this bill. If you remember, this is the one that said that cities could not require a lot size greater than 1,500 square feet. In combination with the setbacks that were determined in the bill, that was excessively restrictive. It also prohibited design standards requiring HOAs for common areas, which shifts the cost of maintenance of those common areas onto your existing residence. So there's a lot of really problematic stuff in this bill. We were very happy with the veto from the governor. There's several others you can see there that we also worked on. Really, the answer on these bills is we couldn't get to a place where they were palatable, so we worked really hard to make sure that if we couldn't get there, then we didn't move forward with them. Other bills of interest, sober living homes, this was a big issue this session. Ultimately, the bills to further regulate sober living homes did not move forward. There's a law enforcement defunding bill that did not move forward. That bill is a very interesting one because the way it was functionalized in law would have been very difficult for growing cities in particular. There was a bill on public meetings that would have allowed, for example, city council to respond directly to somebody in a call to the public. That did not move forward either. And there's a lot of conversation about whether folks from other countries should be able to hold real property in Arizona. That did also not move forward. Vehicle loads restrictions, this is a bill that's going to allow you to cite folks who do not cover their loads in cities. Right now, that's only applicable on highways, so when you have folks that are dumping aggregate materials, in particular on roads, they're now going to be able to be cited for that in city. DUI threshold, this applies the commercial DUI threshold of .04 to anybody who is a taxi, limo driver, or a rideshare driver, so that's like Uber and Lyft. And then 1335 was the alternative process for public land sales. A lot of state agency continuations this year. The one I'm going to point out is obviously ADOT. That would have been pretty bad if we didn't have a Department of Transportation going forward. Really hard to get all the federal money we need for roads when we don't have an entity to pass that through. So they did get an eight-year continuation, that was really good. Commerce Authority got a five-year continuation, and they also got some extra reporting requirements for municipal permitting processes, so that's going to be something we're working on implementing as well. And I think that takes me to the end, and I just want to take a moment to thank you all for your engagement this year during this session, and also to thank all of our staff because at the heyday of our session, we were probably reviewing about 250 bills, and our team was just super fast about getting feedback and really appreciate that, especially Rudy on all those housing bills. He's a rock star. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Katie. Council, any questions, comments?
No questions, just a comment, Mayor, if I may. Just, I think this evening has been an example of the caliber of staff that we have here working for our citizens in Maricopa, the vision that they have, the execution of that vision, and what they've brought to our city has just been phenomenal today. So thank you all for your efforts, your reports here to not just us, but to the people who we represent and for what you're doing for our city. Thank you so much.
And anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Weah.
I just want to say that I couldn't say it any better than what Councilman Gettle said, but it's amazing to come in any time in the morning or hours at night and see everybody at their jobs, working at their desk, working because they wanted to get a project out. So it's been very impressive from the beginning for some of the hires that we've had over the years. So thank you very much for spending time with us, spend a little more time with your families, but thank you for spending time with us.
Councilmember Noor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Katie for this presentation, and as someone who's worked at the legislature, when I, I wasn't on council when the city hired Katie, but when I heard that the city of Maricopa hired Katie, I was in awe. I was like, how did we get Katie? Because I've known Katie for 20-plus years. I was like, how did we get so lucky? And as you saw tonight, we are extremely blessed to have Katie representing this city and our constituents at the Capitol, and I just want to thank you for all your hard work and thank you for serving the residents of Maricopa.
Vice Mayor Lierman.
To echo Councilmember Noor, other cities are in envy of Maricopa because of Katie Proctor, so we are very lucky to have her.
Well, we'll just keep making her turn red. I can't go anywhere. I think you all heard my story one time when I was at an event, and she says, Mayor, we got to get your picture with so-and-so. And I'm like, eh. And she goes, no, you never know what you or that person's going to become. And I'm like, well, let me take my picture with you because I never know what you're going to become. She's pretty awesome. But I want to go back to what Councilmember Gettle said in terms of our employees. We, each of these bills, 1,600, did you say, Katie? 1,600-ish type bills, that's huge. And we have to know what's going on with everyone. They have to decipher what's happening, does it impact our city? How hard do we have to fight? What do we need to battle with? What data do we need to battle? And she's there almost every day along with our lobbyists, and then they call on me and other councilmembers to come in to fight, you know, some battles with them. And so the level of knowledge and expertise and hard work of our employees, I just want you all to know that I appreciate you all because you're fantastic, and it's only with that level of staff can we work to make sure we're protecting the interests of the city of Maricopa. It's hugely important, and so I thank you very much, and thank you for the update, Katie.
All right, that brings us to the end of our city council meeting. Our meeting is adjourned.